Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Danielle McCray. I am the councilwoman representing the 2nd District and also Chair of the committee. In attendance, we have our committee members. Councilman Mark Conway from the 4th District. Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District. Councilman James Torrance from the 7th District. We are also joined today by councilmembers Christopher Burnett with the 8th District and also Councilwoman Odette Ramos with the 14th District. From the President's Office, we have Preston Lewis today with us. And also from the Mayor's Office, we have Director Nina Themelis. Also joined today in attendance is Trey Hayes. Our staff to the committee. Before we get started, and I think I need to take care of this myself. Before we get started, everyone, please take a moment to turn off or silence your cellphones. And today, we're going to be holding hearings on Council Bill 23-0379, Facial Recognition Technology Regulations. This is for the purpose of regulating the use of facial recognition technology, requiring possessors of data recovered from facial recognition technology to develop a certain policy regarding retention and destruction of data, establishing certain penalties, defining certain terms, and generally relating to the use of facial recognition technology. First, we're going to hear from representatives from our city agencies. Then, we're going to have an opportunity for councilmembers to ask questions. And actually, prior to our councilmembers asking questions, we're going to have a presentation from our bill sponsor as well. At this time, I am going to go to our bill sponsor for any opening remarks that he may have. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. Councilman Burnett, sponsor of the bill, 8th District. So, I'll keep the remarks short because we do have a presentation that goes into further detail on the bill. But I just wanted to start with thanking our agency representatives here and the administration for working with us pretty tirelessly for the last almost a year or so, maybe two, to try and craft a bill that I think takes us a step forward in regulating and creating more accountability and transparency around the issue of facial recognition technology, how it's used by both the private sector and public sector. And that's what this bill sets out to do. For my colleagues, I will note that the version of the bill that you received initially it was introduced is very different than the one that we're going to be talking about today. And a lot of that has had to do with concerns with preemption and sort of interference or guardrails that are set up by the state and federal law. And so, we will have a presentation that talks about what facial recognition is, what biometric data is, how it's used, what are some of the issues. We have a partner presentation as well that will lean into that a little bit more. But, and then we'll go into a lot of detail around the revisions and amendments, proposed amendments to the bill, some of which, Madam Chair, we will have to continue to work with our agency partners to flesh out, mainly Department of Housing and Community Development, who you'll hear from, who received some of the pretty critical amendments earlier this week. And so, we're going to sit down with them and a few others following this hearing. But I think this is a very important step for the City of Baltimore, to show leadership and better protect the citizens of our city from the capturing and distribution of their very personal biometric data. And so, I think we have an opportunity here to be leaders in the state of Maryland and across the country in joining other jurisdictions and moving this ball down the field. And we'll have to continue to work with our state partners, as you'll hear from the Law Department, to make some additional revisions in state law to be able to take additional steps to protect our citizens and their data. And so, with that, I'll step back, and I know we have a lot of agency reports to get through, and we'll take it from there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to hear from our agencies at this time. And we're going to start with the Office of City Rights and Wage Enforcement. The only thing, just as a reminder for our agency representatives, please just state your first and last name, the agency you're with, and just your position prior to speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tyler Chanel, Legislative Liaison for the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. We support a favorable committee report with the amendments from the Law Department.
We're going to hear from our city solicitor's office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Rulie on behalf of the Law Department. We submitted our report on the first reader version of the bill, and there's a lot of legal issues here, the largest being that much of what was in the first reader is already done in state law. So, we had to take that into consideration, as well as some of the constitutional concerns. I mean, I can go through all the legal issues if you want or not. I know there's been a lot of amendments circulated by the sponsor, and that takes care of most of these legal issues. I received a recent amendment that had a licensing provision, and I haven't finished analyzing that. But I have given the sponsor comments on the amendments I've seen. So, I can do whatever the Chair wants. I could go through the first reader, but I'm not sure if that's a productive use of our time since it's progressed past that.
Are you able, were all of the amendments that you suggested, you guys did submit your report ahead of time, so our committee members did receive it or had time to review that? However, we submitted on the 13th, but we had time.
Right.
So, are there any items that were mentioned within your report that the amendments that were sent out by the sponsor, were there any that weren't addressed?
That's kind of hard to say, because the current version of the amendments I got for this bill like a day or so ago take out a lot of the problems the Law Department had, but they add in a licensing section, and they add in a few terms that I was able to say in Article 19 should probably come out. For example, locally defining probable cause, I think would narrow the bill more than the sponsor intends, because that's sort of a term of art that changes over time with constitutional law, and it's very fact-specific. So, I wouldn't want your bill to intend to capture everything and inadvertently capture only a smaller subset. So, I recommended removal of that. But as far as I can tell, in the current version of the amendments, the only piece I'm a little bit concerned about is the licensing, but I haven't had a full time yet to review and make sure that that piece would be legal. But other than that, the majority of the things that we mentioned in the report on the first reader, I believe, have been taken care of in this round of amendments.
And Madam Chair, I'll say, everything they sent us, we adopted. The licensing portion is the one, what I was saying earlier, my opening statement, that we still have to sit down with Department of Housing and Law to talk through. But everything else that they gave us that prior to Monday, we added that in Monday. So, we haven't had, we haven't had a chance to talk to law or housing yet. I'm going to talk about it today, but we will rehuddle after this. But everything else that they gave us, we incorporated into the interlineated version. We didn't leave anything out.
And to be clear, I mean, we've had our report for some time, and at the request of the sponsor, we held off submitting it to the committee until the last possible moment. So, I apologize to the rest of the committee members for that. But it, you know, the first reader doesn't really look anything like the current amended version. So, again, I'm happy to address anything you want to address there or just take questions if you've got them.
Thank you. It's really, they'll come during, if we have any questions, they'll come during that time period. So, we're going to go to, and thank you for your report. We're going to go to our next, our next agency, and I'm just gonna, we're going to go to Is someone here from Finance or Director Themelis? Are you, do you stand by the report that was submitted?
Yeah, the Department of Finance will stand by their report. I'll double-check and see if I can have somebody come up to the room. It was my understanding that we would have a representative today.
Okay. The Police Department?
Good morning. Thank you, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Erin Murphy, Director of Government Affairs. I want to thank the Councilman and Ms. Sauer. We have had many discussions outside of just the first reader. I'm here with the, our lab chief and Director of Data Driven. We are still in continuing conversations. We just received, we've had several meetings. We had a meeting with the Councilman, and we also had one with the State's Attorney's Office, addressing certain things that we, we support reasonable regulations. We just want to make sure that we are still able to do what we need to do within the parameters of, you know, with the Law Department suggested. So, we are still looking at the amendments that were given to us Monday afternoon, so we can answer sort of general questions. But I've explained to the Councilman that we still have some concerns with some definitions and other things. But we are, that's why we were advised today, it's sort of a working session, because we still, we can't take a position as it is currently, because we still have to make sure that we have the ability to do what we're saying. But we do support reasonable regulations, and we appreciate, it's been very collaborative, and we do appreciate that.
Thank you. And just to set expectations, so we're all on the same page. This is, this is the initial hearing. There will likely be subsequent work sessions and voting sessions, but we're not voting on any items at this time. We're just going to give the sponsor a chance to, of course, introduce the bill. And thank you. We're going to move on to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood, Safety and Engagement.
Thank you. John Hoffman, Policy and Research Associate Director at MNC, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood, Safety and Engagement. We stand by our bill report and defer to the Law Department. That said, we, our research has found that there are opportunities and also challenges with the use of this technology. And as a result, we do support regulation of its use to especially guard against potential misuse and systematic errors. Thanks.
Department of Transportation?
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. Our report has been drafted, but given the recent amendments, it's still awaiting approval. But I do have an excerpt, I do want to just enter into the record right now, which is specific to Baltimore City Department of Transportation. The agency currently does not actively utilize public-facing facial recognition technology. DOT's Automated Traffic Enforcement Violation Division, ATVS, operates an extensive network of automated enforcement cameras across Baltimore City. However, automated enforcement cameras operated by DOT's ATVS Division are designed to capture identifying information of the vehicles associated with violations related to speed, red light running, and prohibited commercial vehicle traffic, as opposed to facial recognition of individual persons. For the purpose of regulating operations, DOT's ATVS Division follows a strict standard operating procedure, as well as an active memorandum of understanding with the Baltimore City Police Department. In addition, DOT's ATVS Division includes an on-staff ombudsman, as well as quality insurance team who are tasked with reviewing each automated citation to ensure accuracy. And we appreciate the opportunity to participate in the hearing and have this important discussion. Thank you.
The Office of the Comptroller did submit a report prior. Do you stand by the report? They did state that they were deferring this to other agencies. Do you stand by the report?
I believe the Office of the Comptroller, yes, does stand by its report.
So, we're going to go to the State's Attorney's Office. Is there a representative? Is there a representative from the Baltimore Development Corporation?
Madam Chair, Nina Themelis, there's no representative from the Baltimore Development Corporation here today. They weren't certain that the bill directly applied to them, but I'll continue to speak with the sponsor and the BDC and make sure that they attend any subsequent hearings and submit a report.
To my, to my understanding, this, your bill regulates the use of facial recognition technology across the board, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, they should be here. I actually have questions that I don't know if someone is here to answer about how this impacts businesses and the fact that we're about to be a tech hub, or we actually are at this time. So, they need to be here for future hearings. If you could just make sure that they get that message. Thank you, Director.
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
The last, well, Department of Finance did submit a report that is uploaded. So, at this time, we're going to get into, we're going to get into the bill sponsor's presentation. Chair recognizes Councilmember Burnett and any guests that he has.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a presentation that should be up in a second. All right. You can just jump to the second slide. So, I think it's important to level set what we're talking about here. And so, in the interest of time, I'll be moving quickly through these slides, but for my colleagues, if you have any questions, I'm happy to stop, take questions along the way. But in short, facial recognition systems are creating a map of a person's face in the same way that your fingerprints are mapped. It is a map of your face, your biometric data. These systems capture face images or videos using cameras or other devices, and through that, the tech, the artificial intelligence embedded in the technology maps out the distance between your eyes and other facial features. And what it does is, it compares the, what is the image that's captured to an underlying database to determine potential matches and giving a likely verification, usually on a scale of likelihood, that the person that is in the underlying database is the person that was captured on that camera. Sort of the best way I can summarize that pretty quickly, but it is obviously a little bit deeper than that. And in its current form, a humor, human analyst or processor will conduct an analysis of the generated matches, which in some instances can continue to be a problem when it comes to getting the right person. But we'll note that that is an important extra layer, that there is both an AI intervention and a human intervention to determine if what that, if that match, that likely match is actually the person that we're looking at. And we'll, we will actually have a second presentation that will sort of rope into this one from our partner, Andrew Northrup, from the Office of the Public Defender, who will talk a little bit more today about how difficult it is for a human to make these matches as well. Next slide. And I'll say that, I know this, this presentation is very detailed. We'll email it out to the committee, so that I'm not like sitting here reading line by line, that you can review it a little bit on your own. So, biometric, so what is being captured is biometric data. And so, I made the comparison that this type of data is very similar to fingerprints, iris scans, voice prints, DNA profiles. These are all very different, but very similar types of biometric data. And this biometric data is a unique identifier in the same way that your social security number or your fingerprints are uniquely you. And so, the rationale for taking steps to try and regulate this type of technology is similar to what we would do if you had to walk into Walgreens and someone said, "Put your hand on this scanner," and we're scanning your fingerprints, or we're scanning your iris. Most people would say, "Well, what are you using, using this information for? Where is it being stored? Who has access to it? Is it being sold? Who, how is this being used against me or for me or to, or in any way?" And so, you know, similar to those types of data, biometric data, facial recognition fits into that, that same bucket is how I sort of think about it. And it's, it is used for marketing, it's used for commercial purposes. And so, this information is being bought and sold to deliver things like targeted ads or profiles on customers. The Police Department is using it to identify potential suspects in criminal cases using smartphones, other, other sort of devices are all collecting this information, all distributing this information and storing it somewhere. And so, what we have upon us is a very serious concern being raised around personal privacy in public and private spaces and data security. How is this information being handled and by who? And what the impacts of those, of that misuse or misidentification can have on the citizens of Baltimore. And the other piece of it is that we're getting closer and closer to this being a form of currency. I'll note that nearby, Oriole Stadium, has a kiosk in which you put your credit card in, and you just simply walk and grab things from the refrigerator. And folks wonder, "Well, how do they know what I got? How do they know who I am?" Well, there's facial recognition, identifying that Chris Burnett has bought a IPA, because he loves IPAs, and paid this much for it, and may have, may have come back again in the fourth inning and did the same thing. And, and so, again, you wonder, okay, if I had to scan my fingerprints to do that or my iris to do that, would people be as willing to give that information up or utilize those type of services without really knowing who or what or how that, that data is being used or collected or distributed? And more importantly, the other piece of it is, is that we know that identity theft is rampant. Our own city has been subject to a ransomware attack and other, and frequent attacks on our own data. And so, the, unlike your social security number, you can't change your face. You can't change your fingerprints. And so, having a regulatory framework in place is important, because at the, at this current moment, there, there is really no oversight. There is, it is the Wild Wild West when it comes to how your information is being utilized, collected, and distributed. So, I touched on a few of these things, but the, the current unregulated state means that there are heavy privacy concerns, that this technology can be employed without, employed without anyone's knowledge or their consent. It can have a chilling effect on freedom of expression. It erodes the rights of privacy. And more importantly, there have been instances, which we'll talk about later, of misidentification and, and how that's been used to get the wrong person when, when undergoing investigations. There's also the issue of bias and discrimination. The underlying technology has largely been developed by white males, and the systems that are used to train these algorithms are trained with white male faces. And so, the data, over and over again, studies have shown that the folks who are the BIPOC community, the trans community, folks that have physical disabilities, women, black women in particular, are often misidentified or have lower scales of correct identification, and that has real implications on social inequalities, as well as their interactions with law enforcement. The other concern just largely is the surveillance state of being able to exist, walking through the city, walking into a business, and being able to do so in which, in a way in which you think you are, you are engaging in so in a private manner, but really, who you are, who you're with, what you're buying, what you're doing, is all being monitored and monetized and shared into an ecosystem that very few of us in this room know a lot about, including myself, probably in the front of that list. And so, that, that lack of accountability and transparency is leading to violations of our civil liberty and unchecked power, and more importantly, just very concerned about where this takes us as a democracy. And we've seen in other countries where this type of technology has been deployed to, to oppress black and brown folks, to oppress minority religious groups, to identify folks for further repercussions by government. But also, there's this whole ecosystem of the private sector, in which we really don't know how this information is being used or shared at all, frankly. And then, the last piece is the identity theft. Again, that is a, there are millions and millions of instances in which databases, and these are a few headlines, but every day, we're seeing more and more of companies being hacked, data, biometric data being collected, likely being posted on the dark web for purposes that are beyond our understanding. And so, there has been, as you can see, a wide array of government responses, which I believe this bill, or at least the initial version of the bill, was attempting to mimic best practices along the way to protect the biometric data of our citizens, to try and prevent a lot of the things that we know to be occurring in other places from occurring here before it is too late. And so, just to get into, I can stop there, Madam Chair, because we actually do have a, a presentation, a second presentation, but I wanted to see if there were any questions that folks had about anything so far, if that was okay, or you want me to just keep rolling? Keep on going? Okay. All right. All right. So, we will take you through the revised version of this bill. So, there's been a lot of changes, as I discussed. And the best way I can kind of describe it to the public and to the committee is that the first version of this bill essentially would play out in this way. You walk into a, your local grocery store or pharmacy, and the initial iteration of the bill would have required that entity to grant permission to collect your data. It also had regulations around the sale and distribution of that data and additional protections and whistleblower protections and whatnot to protect folks if their, if their data was misused or their permission was not granted. After conversations with the Law Department, we learned that that violated a number of other laws and preempt, and some preemption issues that are outlined in the Law Department's initial report. So, I won't really go into the details of that. And so, what we have in front of us now are four elements that, and that's sort of the private sector. On the public sector, there were also a lot more regulations around the use in public spaces, data storage and retention, the types of cases it can be used in via Law Department, I mean, by law enforcement. And again, what we ended up running into were issues with the Public Information Act, which already sort of regulates data storage, retention, distribution. We ran into some First Amendment issues, and then we also ran into some other, other barriers related to preemption. And so, we, there are still some important and I think critical pieces of this bill that this committee should strongly consider moving. And I'm hopeful that, you know, we can get through this and talk through some of the proposed changes, continue to work with the agencies to craft something that I think can put us in the right direction while we continue to advocate for a statewide or federal bill. So, the key elements of the bill include, there's definitions, we're going to go through the public entity regulations that remain, the private entity licensure proposal, which still is being discussed with DHCD and law, and then the law enforcement regulations as well. All right. So, I'm not going to read all of these, but this first page essentially tries to create a definition of what we're talking about here, because, you know, there's a strong difference between the type of biometric data required to unlock your phone versus what something that's used in a video camera. And so, what we tried to do was, the best we could, to craft something that I think we're going to get additional feedback on from the, from the agencies. But essentially, we're trying to say it's a, the data itself is information that's collected via a single image, a video sequence, a view constructed from multiple cameras, three-dimensional data used to identify an individual, and information gathered from systems analysis of images. I think we may have some additional revisions to come on that. We try to define what the search is as well. And I think BPD will have additional comments here on how they conduct searches and how we define the analyst that is doing the verification, and what that means and what sort of training and protocols need to be in place as well. But this is, I think, a really good attempt at both using, because I didn't want to rescind the white paper we did, but we do have another white, if you guys want to go into further detail what other jurisdictions are doing. We tried to come up with a definition that took into account how we're using it here in Baltimore City, but also how other jurisdictions have tried to define this emerging technology. Next slide. So, the broader city agency... So the broader city agency, let me make sure I've got my notes here. So yeah, public entities, when it comes to public entities, we are heavily barred from regulations due to, again, state preemption. But I will say that more and more jurisdictions are trying to take steps to regulate this and a number have considered bans. This bill doesn't do that, but what we will do is it goes through how we store the data and much of which is already included in the Public Information Act, but we did leave pieces in that do, you know, establish retention and reporting schedules, but also just reiterate that there needs to be compliance with state law as well and making sure that the agencies are following state law when it comes to data storage and retention. I'll note that this slide, there's a typo that's in one of the amendments at the bottom. We have already fixed that, where it says state twice. Oh, it's supposed to say that way. Okay, ah, the state, state government article. Yes, okay. That is not a typo. All right. Next slide. All right. So when it comes to licensure, the private entities, what we, again, I discussed that initially what we were trying to do was either give the private entity the requirement to get permission to collect data. The second version of this, which you haven't seen, and because we aren't even considering it anymore, is an opt-out, but similarly, we ran into some legal challenges with that. And so the third version of this is what we have before you is establishing a licensing structure, similar to how we require licensing for alarm systems in Baltimore City. We want to create a licensure and a registry for where facial recognition is being used by merchants, so it doesn't prohibit them from using it. It doesn't, we believe, we'll continue to talk the law, but we believe it doesn't really hit into some of the guardrails that, some of the guardrails that were presented in the earlier version of the bill. But what this does do is it creates more transparency. And so with the idea being that through the registration and making that a publicly accessible document, folks can decide for themselves if they want to enter a facility that may be using this type of technology or not. And it gives the autonomy back to the citizens to decide where they want to go or not. And so we tried to mimic this off of other licensing structures that we have in the city. But again, I will note that this is very much in draft form and we will continue to work with the Department of Housing and Community Development to figure out a few key things that you'll likely hear from DHCD, which are, well, how do the code enforcement folks know that the technology is being used? If someone claims that it's not being registered? What the reporting mechanisms are for citizens to report if something isn't registered in the same way that they would report like a rental licensing, a lack of having a rental license? And what the notification is to entities? Because the last thing we want to do is the first, you know, infraction is one that is a citation. And so for the first offense, we just wanted it to be a notice, the going to the entity that they have to comply. And obviously subsequent offenses, we have a citation up to the allowable amount under state law. But the idea being that we want compliance, we want people to participate in this program and so that the city has a better grasp of what's happening, but also it's that the citizens of Baltimore do too. So before we go through the regulations, law enforcement, I do want to kick it over to our partner in the Office of the Public Defender, who's going to take us through a facial recognition activity and process for the committee, so you can kind of get a better grasp of what we've been talking about so far. And if you could introduce yourself.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Northrup and I am a public defender with the Forensics Division for the State of Maryland. And basically my division handles forensic evidence across the state of all types. The last couple of years, we've seen a real proliferation of facial recognition technology, so we've had to become familiar with it around the state. And so I just sort of wanted to show what exactly is involved in the activity, because a lot of times there's some misperceptions of it. And obviously this evidence carries a great amount of weight. When people hear facial recognition match, they think, well, golly, what else is there to say? So I sort of want to talk about what we picture and that's sort of the, this is sort of from the Bourne, one of those Bourne movies where they just sort of have like the picture, they zoom in on somebody's face, they get a one-to-one match, and the analyst just sort of looks to see if the computer makes a mistake. But what really happens is what you get is something like this. And this is actually discovery from an actual case where you have a probe photo and then you get a list of candidates and then the end of, the person has to look at these candidates to see which is the right person. So the question is, how well do people perform this task? Because this is a really important task, because these are very similar photographs and the person has to pick the right person. And so I guess I would just ask the folks here to look at this picture right here and see that face at the top and can you, is that face in the eight below? And if so, where? All right. How many people think it's number one? Anyone? Number two? Okay, so I got a couple of people for number two. What about number three? Number four? Anyone? Is the picture there at all? How many people think the picture's not there? Okay, well, actually that person is number two. And so that's, and then you can see it's not exactly an easy task. And then we'll go to this one, which is that picture at the top in the eight below? Is it number one? Anybody want to guess number one? Number two? Okay, see number two. How about number three? Anybody for number three? Number four? Okay, number four? Couple for number four? Okay, well, I'll just sort of, I'll cut to the chase, it's not in there at all. So that person's not in that picture at all. And then of course, there's this exercise, how many different individuals are in this array? I mean, obviously there are about 40 people up there. So how many people are, how many actual individuals are there in this group of people? Is it one person? Two people? Three people? Forty people? Anybody have, anybody want to take a guess? Well, actually, I'll just, I'll cut to the chase, it's only two people. So there's two individuals in that array. And what's interesting is they, this is actually done in Australia. A lot of the research for facial recognition is out of there. This is a particular graduate study program. And what they found were the individuals who were in the program with these individuals knew immediately who they were. So that's like Bob and Ted, whereas if you are unfamiliar with them, you wouldn't know that. And this is one thing to keep in mind, that familiar facial recognition is something that we do every day, is a much different task than recognizing unfamiliar faces. And the degrees of familiarity matter, but where the lines are is unclear. Obviously, if it's somebody you work with every day, but if it's somebody you might see around the neighborhood, that would be sort of a lesser degree. And then it just sort of, the continuum goes out. But the lines are not really drawn that clearly because the research, again, is sort of being done. And this is, to begin, my facial recognition is a field that's sort of in its nascenty when it comes to this. And there's a lot of standards that are being set or in the process of being set that aren't yet set. And it's a similar process to eyewitness identification, where a lot of the same issues dealing with confidence not equaling accuracy, as well as trans, cross racial identification, all these issues are there as well. And the bottom line is that we're not good at it. And this is research out of Australia with individuals with no training or minimal training picked the correct face out of an algorithmically developed list, much like the ones that are generated in crime labs across the state, 50% of the time. And 80% of those errors were false matches, which should scare everybody here, because that means that they're investigating the wrong guy. And individuals with extensive training did the task correctly about 70% of the time. So it helps, but it's hardly a guarantee. And that's the site for the study. Passport officers are people who literally do this every day, when asked to compare a photograph, a person to a photograph, you know, when somebody walks through the customs line, were wrong 20% of the time. And 70% of those errors were false positives. And so this, literally people do this every day, who didn't have the training and they do not perform better than untrained students. And again, there's a great deal of variability. Some people are actually really good at this and some people are not good at it, and most of us fall in the middle. And unless you're one of these super recognizers or face blind, you're not going to really know where you are. And if you have a minimal amount of training, what that does, that makes you more confident in your assertions, but it doesn't necessarily make you more accurate, according to the research. And sort of, this needs to be stated because it's completely counterintuitive and frankly, it's not a skill that we've had to have. It's only a skill that we've developed in the last couple hundred years with the advent of photography, where we've actually started looking at faces apart from individuals, bodies and gates and everything. And only intensive training will allow for proven in this task. And so what does this mean for casework? Sort of like issues I've observed around the state, charges being filed based solely upon an FRT hit. There was a rash of those earlier this year in Baltimore City. Fortunately, those were resolved and I've seen that in other places across the state. And then the other concern is analysts using extrinsic information to make decisions. And when I say extrinsic information, I mean information outside of the actual facial recognition itself, not the task of that, but information, say, about the individual. And like, for example, this is actually some, from discovery, where as an afternoon detective, we were unable to find any positive results in the screenshots. And so that was sort of the initial analyst number one. And the detective responds, okay, copy that, thanks for trying. And so then the next day, analyst two says, I went through this again, I have a possible match I'm sending for your follow-up. Please be advised, a very tentative match, although keep in mind the discovery that we got said that it was a match. And then also below that says, please be advised, this individual is a possible outstanding warrant. Details are contained in the detached report. And what's wrong with extrinsic information? Isn't that good police work? But not when it comes to these types of tasks. I mean, there's been, there's a whole host of research showing that extrinsic information that's not task specific can bias the outcome of the actual analysis. There's the context bias, where you get that context irrelevant information, well, I'm looking at these five faces, that guy was convicted of this crime before, so I think it may be him. That's, even if you don't, even if you're not consciously doing that, that will subconsciously affect you, which is why we try and make these decisions blind, which is also why pharmaceutical companies do double blind studies, because they don't want anybody influenced. And also confirmation bias, once you know that one person has picked something, you're going to be more likely to believe that somebody else did. And so how can this play out? And there's a couple of cases that come to mind. Kirk Bloodsworth was the guy who was convicted of rape and murder, sentenced to death, exonerated by DNA. He was, the investigation started from a tentative ID off of a photograph and by the time it got to trial, there were five witnesses who said, I know it's him. And then also, it happened in this context as well. This week, The New Yorker released this article about Alonso Sawyer, which is a case from Baltimore County, right over the line. And what it was, an MTA bus driver was assaulted, the FRT performed on-camera footage from the bus led to recognition of Sawyer, upon the confirmatory ID of the probation officer who was arrested and held without bail. He was held for nine days until he was released when the probation officer recanted his ID only because Mr. Sawyer's wife refused to take no for an answer and just kept going until she got this result. And this is not a case of no investigation or bad investigation. This is a problem, is even if this stuff is inadmissible in court, which currently it is, it can set people off in the wrong direction. In this case, the photo array with Mr. Sawyer was shown to the victim and the victim said he's not in there. The assailant in the video is half a foot shorter and 20 years younger than Sawyer. His family consented to the search of his property, nothing was found, and the alibi was disregarded. So they had evidence showing that it wasn't him and it went the other way. And so how does this bill help? Basically by establishing standards and transparency. I've got grave concerns about using this at all, but that ship has sailed. I mean, I also wanted the Orioles, I thought they should win the pennant and they didn't. And so the technology has potential for misuse, even if it's not admissible in court. And so the idea is to curb this misuse through standards, transparency and disclosure. And so that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And we just have a few more slides from ours to go a little bit deeper and then we'll be done. Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we could skip, there we go. All right. So jumping right in, so the bill, the proposed amended version of this bill does a couple things as it pertains to law enforcement. And I think the first is, most importantly, to what he was just describing, it requires technology standards to be set on the types of technology being utilized by law enforcement. And that can be, the methods of the development of that technology can be evaluated by the National Institute of Standards and Technology to ensure the accuracy and minimum vendor requirements. And in short, the reason for this is to make sure that if law enforcement is using it, that they're using the most up-to-date and accurate type of technology, so that we're not getting misidentifications and that we are, that we're ensuring the likelihood of that type of harm is minimal. The other part of this is it limits the types of crimes being used to very serious types of crimes, either part one or part two crimes, or other crimes against the person. And so, and I would note that there's a state bill that will be introduced in this current upcoming session, which seeks to also limit the scope of which facial recognition is used by law enforcement to very serious crimes against persons. So those are murders, rapes, shootings, carjackings, things that there is a victim that has been harmed, missing persons would be the type of thing that this type of technology could be useful for and the bill would still allow for the use by law enforcement. It requires additional keeping of records of when it's being used in investigations. There are notice requirements that we're still working through with the police department, so that those requirements will likely change, but we're still in negotiations there, but requiring notice that when there's a match during an investigation. And then there's an expansion of annual reporting to increase public awareness and transparency and how it's used. And then there's some retention guidelines, but most of those are already covered in the Public Information Act. So that's, when you see the big red marks all over the amendments in that section, that's what that's pertaining to. And then last slide here, there's additional oversight and training requirements. As Andrew noted, that with extensive training, we can have better analysts, which I think all of us should want to ensure that the folks that are working in the police department that are analyzing this information and referring it to further investigations are trained to the best of their ability and, which I think is a good thing for all of us. And there's some public disclosure requirements as well baked into the bill. But again, and that was the last slide, and so I'm happy to take questions. We will send this presentation out to anybody who wants it. Kimberly Sauer, my Policy Director and Chief of Staff, who's done a yeoman's job on both this presentation and this bill, is very much willing to share all of the information that we've collected over the last three years for your review, feedback, comment, questions, et cetera. So thank you all for listening to us today and I'm happy to take questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Burnett, for your thorough presentation and also from the presentation from your guests as well. Can you please send the presentation to the committee as well as the committee staffers so we can make sure that it's uploaded within the record, within the public record? My first question, and I believe that this is covered within your bill, but you would likely be able to speak more on it. There have been improvements within the FRT, the facial recognition technology algorithms. I wanted to know about accuracy thresholds when I look at the interlineated copy. It does look like there are some accuracy thresholds. Are you going to be requiring specifically city agencies to refresh the FRT that they use to take advantage of new or improved algorithms to reduce error?
Yeah, so amendment number five speaks to that. And what's being proposed is that the technology from the vendor receive an accuracy score of at least 95% with a plus or minus of 2%. And that was for true positives across all demographic groups. We do require calibration monitoring as well to ensure that this, the software that is being used is properly calibrated and getting the right, we want to make sure that the person is the most likely match. And obviously, there's that secondary process that the police department uses. And so I don't know if you want to speak on that, but these are the, the numbers that we got were from the police department, as far as what they thought was a reasonable range of likelihood and accuracy. But you want to elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, thank you. We intend to do a performance check and validation. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Chief Raina Della Raca from Forensics. We intend to do a full validation of the software and test those limits. So there'll be, in our validation, there'll be, in addition to this, there'll be our own thresholds. So a lot of the stuff that in technology, you'll have a manufacturer's threshold and then an in-practice threshold, because there are differences in uses when they're being used by different people and in different environments, and so we will be testing those as well.
Does that answer your question, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I guess I also want to just note, and I have a follow-up, but I want to know
Yeah, I guess I also want to just know, and I have a follow-up, but I want to know, well, how often are you going to be refreshing or testing, or is your legislation going to call for these refreshes for a certain amount of time? How often do you do that now?
With our technology routinely, everything gets at least an annual check. A lot of the time, the software, though, those, in particular with this one, are owned by the state, and so the state will have to be responsible for some of that. They'll, they'll need to refresh the software itself to upgrade the algorithms. It's the same with latent prints. When the state does a full reboot, we have, it all comes along with us. So then we also have to do a performance check. So they'll notify us, and they'll say, we're doing an upgrade to the software, we're doing a patch, whatever it is. And then we will have to test it in our environment to make sure that nothing has changed and what has changed, and we document all of that. So it would be the same for this.
Does the upcoming state legislation also have those guidelines in about?
I'm not exactly sure what the state guidelines are going to say, but it's routine in most labs. We also intend for this to be part of our accreditation eventually, so that is part of accreditation standard, is that it has to be updated like, as I described previously. I'm not exactly sure what the state legislation covers. Usually that is a little in the weeds for something like that, but it isn't for accreditation.
Okay. It may, yeah, maybe a little in the weeds. It seems like that's the standard now. I just want to make sure it's included. Now, within your section, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at your, the unofficial copy, until we need a copy. It states that this is required evaluation technology for law enforcement. So is this going to be extended? Because I believe that accuracy thresholds and routine refreshing of the software should be standard. So is this going to be required of all city agencies, specifically city agencies outside of law, not just law enforcement?
Yeah, it would apply to all city agencies. What it doesn't apply to is the private sector. And that's mainly because it's out of our reach from a law department perspective. I don't know if Hillary can speak a little bit more, but there was, there were some challenges that we had with trying to extend it outside of city government that she may be able to speak to.
Thank you. Yes. So many jurisdictions that have faced this have been able to provide a more tailored sort of penalty for violations of laws that sort of create inaccurate identifications. One of the main problems the city has is we only have really two tools at our disposal, a fine up to $1,000 or creating something as a misdemeanor. So you end up in this weird world of saying, okay, well, then I, I need to prohibit this use in the public sector entirely. And that becomes a very hard thing to do under the First Amendment. So we get kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place because as a local government, we don't have available to us the same remedies you would have available if you did this same kind of thing at the state level. And one of the things the state level can do is give a citizen a private cause of action to say, you know, I've been harmed by this, you know, I'm all for it if it works, but if it doesn't work, I want some remedy. And that's not something we can provide, so we end up providing like a very broad no that hits our constitutional limit. So hopefully, that kind of gives some sense.
How, how does the, I know you're working through the bill. How does this impact businesses? And I say that just knowing, as I mentioned earlier, Baltimore was recently designated as a federal tech hub. And in a past iteration of the bill, there were impacted businesses. One was actually within my district because they build facial recognition systems. And one thing that they stated was that their cloud FRS, their facial recognition system, it was inoperable within their office because of previous legislation that the city council passed, and that was an unintended consequence. The reason why it was inoperable is because it inhibited them from testing the system and also from using the system. So what impact, if any, outside of, say, implied consent of going into, because it looks like what the signage would be, going into a location and seeing, okay, we utilize facial recognition technology here? What other implications would this have for businesses within Baltimore City?
I think that's it. I mean, we, earlier versions of this bill, I would have a different answer to that question because we did have standards on data storage, retention, sale. I mean, there was a lot that it would have impacted. The amended version of this would just require the registration and the signage.
So say for a business who is developing technology, like the company that I spoke about, they're testing the technology. They, what would they do? Would they just put something up on the outside of their store and say, hey, we're testing technology here? Excuse me, outside of their, their business and say, we're testing this technology, or is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it. We, again, the state may go further. The earlier iteration of what we did was a, would have affected them because it was a year-long ban. We, all of that language is out. So it's just, hey, the implied consent, I actually like that word, implied consent at the entry and the registration so that we know where it's being used. And obviously, there's the compliance that could be an impact, but there's nothing in this bill that would prohibit the development or testing of facial recognition technology in Baltimore City.
And they would have to register? The way that they're utilizing it, that they're testing the, testing the system?
No, just that it's, it's in use on their, on their property. So if they are, so just to give you an example, if I walk into that business and it's not being used in the lobby, they would have no reason to post or do anything. But if they are, then yeah, they would have to register and post that in that entry point, this is what's being used. But beyond that, there are no prohibitions on the development or testing.
Thank you, Councilman. Director, this is where I would have loved to have BDC or someone here, there may be people who testify who could state some things, but I wanted to know how many businesses currently within the city do they have records that are utilizing facial recognition technology? So if you can, if they have that information, just as a committee request, if you could pass that on to the BDC, one of our quasi-agencies. And you know what? I'll save the remainder of my questions. I'll probably just send them offline because it's just not going to be helpful here. We're going to, I'm going to open the floor to other committee members for questions. Chair recognizes Councilman Torrance.
I want to follow up on one of your questions, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Well, let, yeah, we'll get you, Chair Conway, next.
Sorry, guys. Just for public disclosure, I'm heading to Penn North for groundbreaking, but I just wanted to get this question, and this is for BPD. And my relationship to this is with the Public Defendants' Office. Just from teaching constitutional law, understanding constitutional criminal procedure, I would like us to do a thorough analysis of cross-racial identifications and the effect of it on the actual technology, and then also looking at our actual training and staffing, because my understanding is a lot of your staff does not look like me in this division. So I just want to make sure that we have that conversation in terms of not only equity, I'm sure the Equity Office is going to address that as well, but we need to have that conversation because there is racial bias in terms of just making that secondary actual verification. And I want to make sure we're on the record in that that is an official committee request from me to know, one, the current staffing of the department that would be doing this, but also the training that we're trying to lower the effects of CRE, because that is a big issue that we have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can, can you repeat, can you repeat the committee request again, please?
Yes, ma'am. Current staffing, current training, and then what are they doing in terms of procedures for CRE, which is cross-racial effects or cross-racial errors in terms of identification?
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Torrance. And was, I know you said you need to leave early to get to a community event. Do you have any other questions?
No, ma'am, I'm going to take them offline so that everyone else gets a chance.
Okay. We're going to go to Chair Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to actually follow up on your line of questioning. Give me one second. With regards to the registration and licensing for business owners and their properties, how are we thinking about instances in which businesses or business owners are not necessarily using FRT on their properties? So let's say they have a van, and that van is driving through the city, and that van can capture faces and therefore use FRT. Does the licensing, like, are we able to capture that in those instances in which?
I mean, if they're a business that has a location in Baltimore, they, they should be captured. I mean, we can talk to the, this part of the bill is still very much under construction.
Sure.
But the intent would be to do that. I don't have a solid answer for you on if what we have proposed here will do that or if we can do that. Those are still questions that we have to work out with law and DHD.
I asked that question because I think, you know, and you and I have had a couple of conversations about this, and there's a couple advocates here that I've had long conversations about this issue. I think it's something we definitely need to address. Part of the, part of the trouble that I'm having here is managing the 15 minutes in any direction of the city, businesses that operate on our borders and may be traveling to and from, in and out of the city, and may be using these technologies. And we have very little recourse for the capture of data and the transfer of that data to businesses that are technically in the county. I, I think, you know, once again, I think this is a really important issue, and we do need to make sure that people have their privacy. I just, I struggle with, I struggle with using our city resources to really focus on Baltimore City as a sort of donut in the state of Maryland. I think in an ideal world, the federal government would take, take this up, but I know we've had trouble there getting anything done. But next best step is certainly the state. I understand there's a bill being considered. Are any of the things discussed here today part of that bill? Do you have any window into what's being discussed there?
No, I'm not, I mean, I do know Charles Sidmore, I've seen many versions. I mean, he's tried, he's introduced bills at least for the last six years on this. Last year was the furthest any of them got, and so I, I think it's sort of a, the response I would say is, if we're preempted following the passage of a state bill, then, I mean, that would just be the law of the land. But like most actions that we take in this body, we are, are often the sort of donut hole, whether that's what we just did yesterday with inclusion of housing or environmental standards that you've been pushing. You know, we're always would love a, just a, I'm sure even the businesses would love just a federal law that sort of regulates this or a state law that regulates this, but it, I, I don't, I don't know the likelihood of passage. I've heard good things. I have not seen the state bill. We will be working with the sponsor of that bill to figure out where there may be overlap and where there won't be. And obviously, if there's things that stand out to us, we'll make further revisions to the bill. I mean, we're not trying to rush this through this committee. We do know there's a lot more work that needs to be done, including getting a better picture of what the statewide landscape may look like. I just learned of their, of this bill like last week. So I knew he was always putting in something, didn't know it was like imminent again, and so we will try and get more information on that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And certainly appreciate your leadership on this issue because I think I've learned a lot more in your presentations on this issue than I've learned on a lot of other bills. The other question I had, and my second question is, I noticed as a part of the bill, and I'm not sure if this was struck in the amendments that we put in, so forgive me if this is a move question. One of the requirements was reporting out the total number of recognition searches performed through the FBI. Are we able to do that? Are we able to require that the usage of a federal system be reported out?
What page are you on?
This is on page 10 of the bill, 18-22, number two. It says the total number of facial recognition searches performed by the Federal Bureau of Investigation on behalf of the department. So in instances where the Police Department goes to a federal partner and says, hey, we want to search this face, do we?
So those are referrals to the FBI. So that's not, if the FBI is independently conducting their own searches, this, this has no effect on this.
Got it. So it's just when BPD asks?
But if BPD asks, we just want to know how many times the BPD has asked essentially for further, for the FBI to do the search.
Okay. And that, I guess, is staying in the bill, and I guess then the question is a lot, does that still sort of stand up and?
I mean, a total number of times something was requested shouldn't normally be an issue, but obviously, we would be subject to any federal law or court order. So if there happened to be a particular case in which the judge or something else had a, an order that would preclude the disclosure of that in a certain, you know, maybe during a certain trial or during a certain, you know, FBI or other investigation, then we would be subject to that.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We talked about the storage of data, but what about the erasure of data? As we understand, Baltimore City has a very high returning citizen population, and using facial recognition, that may be an opportunity to misclassify a person that has come back into society inadvertently and kind of spark those types of additional issues. Can we speak to how we're, how we're using any type of erasure of data or connection to, connection to individuals that may have, that may have removed their criminal case from their record? So what does that look like?
So I would defer to BPD. All of the provisions that we had, we had to take out.
Yeah.
So BPD can speak to how they're doing it now.
Okay, thank you. And so one of my main questions is particularly in, ironically, in Councilman Torrance's district. He has one of the highest recidivism rates throughout the city as, as well as my district as well. I mean, what are, what are you all doing to account for that?
So this compares to licenses, so it's not criminal records. And so there isn't an expungement of that. So it's not only searching, like, the, like, the DNA databases only search people that are in there for qualifying crimes. This is different than that.
So, but it's connected.
And mugshots.
Yeah, it's connected in a way because, say, for instance, if a person that, and thank you for saying expungement, it was not coming to my brain. If a person has an expungement that is currently not being processed, not being processed or hasn't, hasn't been processed, that hasn't been gone into your system, they walk into a CVS or another private business, and then they get, you know, recognized as a person of interest in a, in an investigation, how does that work?
So I just want to, Graham Campbell with Baltimore Data Driven, I just want to, from a, from our perspective, from a context perspective, we're not capturing live images and then comparing them to databases, right? So we don't like, in the CVS example, or if there was like a traffic camera, like, we, basically, we are taking, we're getting a photo from a still image, you know, that is someone has printed out or given us, that then we are matching using the state system to the mugshots or their driver's license photo. And so when it comes to updating that or purging that, we defer to the state to figure out, you know, how that system works. But part of that, obviously, is, is going into the work that Chief Delaraca was doing with the study.
And thank you for that clarification. I'll reframe my example. There were smashing grabs in Pig Town. One of the major ways that individuals were able to share kind of information with the Police Department were videos, were photos, and things of that nature. So not necessarily, so thank you for the clarification, but the example still applies.
Sure, yeah. So I mean, I think from our perspective, like, there's, and we discussed this with the bill sponsor about evidence, right? So some of these things are, here is a photo of the person, and that's going to stay in the case jacket for the crime, you know, until the crime is closed, and then, you know, it goes down the path. So I mean, I think that stays in terms of the system, you know, when it gets uploaded to the system to see if we have any matches, that's where CMS, which is the, the technology itself in the state, we'd have to get clarification on how often they purge out those submitted images.
Yeah, and I would just be in full transparency. That's one of the major concerns that I have, and I actually talked with, I think it was an individual. and I actually talked with, I think it was an individual reached out to my office about this, this particular bill. That's one of my main concerns because we have such a high recidivism rate and our data operating procedures within the city and also at the state level are to be, there to be, there are lots. I don't know what else to say. There are a lot. And they may not be as accurate as needed and in order for something like this to kind of be successfully managed and executed throughout the city. So I'll just put that out there and that's one of my major concerns. My second question actually has to do with the use of this technology, similar to Chair McCrory's point about businesses, the use of public spaces. When we are looking at businesses that are throughout the city, cross jurisdictional, or just even like in, in relation to like their position in the city, how are we accounting for this particular use in public spaces?
Could you ask for clarity? You mean like if the business is, has a camera that's facing a public space?
Exactly, yeah. So I'm thinking of more of our commercial spaces, like our Main Streets, our, in a Harbor location, our Harbor East. Those businesses actually face public spaces. How are we accounting for that in this bill?
I mean, they would, if they're using, if the business is using the technology, they would have to have a notice on the premise. I don't, there's no requirement that they would, if they had it on a light pole, that they would have to put it on the light pole. But if you're, if the CVS on that Wall Street is using it and if it's public facing, they'd still have, there would be no difference in the registration or the notification requirement.
Okay.
I think, Madam?
Chair recognizes Councilman, or Chair Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think maybe the question you're getting to, Councilwoman, is if someone happens to walk past an establishment that is registered but did not agree to walk into that establishment, how do we handle those situations?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I don't understand the issue. They would just have to, if their, if their technology is, so you're saying that if they were not using it inside their business, but only using it outside the business?
Uh, no, no, no. I guess the idea is they didn't give their consent by walking into the store.
They don't have to give consent. So that is already removed from the bill.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Bullock from the Ninth District, member of the committee. Council, we're going to see if the remainder of the committee members have questions and we'll go to our other council members. Councilman Bullock or Councilman Dorsey, do you have any questions regarding this bill? No? Okay. Okay. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the sponsor, I know you talked a little bit about the sharing of data or the purchasing of data. One of the things that I worry about, similar to what my colleague from the Tenth was talking about, is sharing data that would then trigger deportations or that kind of thing. Because that's something that we definitely don't want as a welcoming city for our immigrant community. So do you have anything, I didn't read it in the bill, so maybe I missed it, in terms of the regulation around the sharing, purchasing of the data that's collected?
For clarity, are you talking about private sector or public sector?
Both.
So there's nothing in there private sector. They can continue to capture and sell your data if this bill were to pass. We initially did have regulations there. We are not allowed to do that at the local level. So the status quo would remain. And I believe the same, I don't want to speak for BPD on their cooperation with law enforcement or with other law enforcement entities, but I don't believe that we have the authority to, from our conversation with the Law Department, to regulate in any way how data is shared between government agencies. A lot of that is, all of that is under the Public Information Act is my understanding. And I think law and BPD can speak to that in a more technical way.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer. I mean, one of the large challenges is that the Public Information Act governs any government entity's sharing of data with any other government record custodian. It applies between city agencies. So it would also apply between us and what we would have to give to the federal government. Of course, that's the baseline in Maryland. And then any other state or federal law that's particular to a particular type of data would also govern. So for example, if the federal government had a warrant, if they had, if they submitted a PIA request, you know, they could get it, subject to whatever redactions or other requirements are in there. So it's just, unfortunately, in Maryland, it's an entirely preempted field for local governments. It's just something that's addressed at, at state level for sharing or disclosure of government records.
Thank you. We are, you know, I don't have any additional questions for the bill sponsor. A lot of the questions that I originally had, it looks like you're going to amend those out of the bill. So I'm not going to waste our time with those. I'm going to go back to Councilwoman Porter at this time.
This question is actually for BPD. If this bill actually goes through, what are the potential safety measures that you're willing to implement to protect kind of the unauthorized use and access and breaches of this data?
Sure, so we can, so the use of the data, I mean, use of the system is obviously going to be restricted to those who have training in the system and there'll be an audit conducted to ensure that, you know.
And who is that?
Who uses the system?
Yeah, who's going to use the system?
Yeah, so currently it's the open source unit under me, right? So that would be, and we're working with the lab as we develop standards and, and training, you know, in terms of whether that grows or whether we share, you know, that kind of thing. But that, that'll all be, you know, we're going down that road now. But currently it's open source here.
Okay. And this question is for the bill sponsor. Are there any successful cities that have done this that can be shared as far as kind of like the QA or any type of breach with the Baltimore City Police Department?
I mean, there's a lot of cities that have done, I think, a really good job with this.
Yeah, which ones? Yeah, which ones?
Well, I would say state, well, state level. Illinois, Maine are where we got a lot of the proposed regulations from around data storage, retention, sale of data, collection of data, training. I mean, there's a tremendous amount. And we can send you the white paper we wrote, which covers every jurisdiction that has taken this up.
Sure.
But you'll notice is most of them are state, states. Illinois goes the furthest with the Biometric Protection Act. But most of what they do in those states, we are preempted from doing locally. So I can give you a lot of great examples and I think there's a lot more we wanted to do here. But unfortunately, the preemption issues remain. And so I'll be in Annapolis and hopefully folks will join me.
All right, cool.
One thing that we did add was to create, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Kimberly Sauer. I'm Councilman Burnett's Chief of Staff.
Okay, I'm going to recognize you, Ms. Sauer.
I'm sorry.
You're good.
So one thing we did add to it was a tracking system, an internal tracking system, similar to how electronic medical records are, are tracked, like hospitals have when users log in, when they see a record, what record they see. And so we created that as a requirement for BPD to track who is accessing the technology and running the technology because we know that we, there are certain abuses, especially in like domestic violence situations and things like that where people abuse their power. And so we wanted to make sure that those systems were set up.
No, I appreciate that. And ironically, there is precedence in the city through the Office of the Inspector General as far as our financial disclosure statement. So there is precedence there to kind of build in that tracker in support for you all. So. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no additional questions.
Okay, thank you. For the bill sponsor, Ms. Sauer, can you all send the white paper? I feel like I have one from maybe early '22, but if you have an updated one, if you could share it with the entire committee just so we can make sure everyone has the information. And thank you. Did we have any additional questions from committee members or other council members who've joined? Okay, no. We're going to get straight into our testimony. Looks like we have a number of folks who are scheduled to testify. Just to give the information, when you testify, please provide your first and last name. If you are with an organization, please also state the organization that you are with. Everyone will have two minutes because we do have a large amount of people signed up. Everyone will have two minutes to testify. And I will alert you if you are, if you do go over the two minutes. Keep in mind, you are not limited by presenting written testimony. That can also be emailed into us as well if you have further things to say. We are going to start, and I do apologize if I do not say any names correctly, but I believe this is Robert Enton.
Enton, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Robert Enton. I'm an attorney at the Gordon Feinblatt Firm, which is just down the street from the City Hall. I represent the Maryland Bankers Association. I'm their general counsel. Worked with them for many, many decades, plus a number of other industries that have, in their, deal with the legislative process. From Maryland Bankers Association, I want to thank the sponsor and his chief of staff. We got the amended versions of the bills yesterday evening. Obviously, we've, obviously, we've not had a chance to send them out for feedback for our members. The main thing that I wanted to mention to the committee, and I've discussed it with the sponsor, is that for the banking industry in particular, we are heavily, heavily regulated at the federal level under what's called the Graham-Leach-Bliley Act. Typically, it applies to insurance companies, securities companies and banks. And in the, under the state legislation, 143507, which is the State Personal Information Protection Act, there is a Graham-Leach-Bliley exemption for entities that are governed by and subject to Graham-Leach-Bliley. In the legislature, that's been on the books for many years. In the legislature for the last two years, state legislature, we've seen bills introduced dealing specifically with biometric information. And those bills, and they did have not passed, but there's a sense that it very may well pass this year, there is a Graham-Leach-Bliley exemption. When you look around the country in other states that have dealt into this, there is a Graham-Leach-Bliley exemption. And what it does is it provides a consistent standard across the country for those entities that are subject to this federal law, instead of having, you know, 50 different state laws and God knows how many different local laws. So the only thing I would say at this point, I haven't gotten any feedback on the details that are in the bill now. It certainly has way scaled back from where it was before these amendments were offered. But I know that the feedback we had gotten to date from our large banks, our small banks, our federally chartered, our state chartered, were all that they would very much like to see the same exemption apply under this local law that applies under state law. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Lydia Stamato. Lydia Stamato. Taylor Smith Hams. Taylor Smith Hams. Sonia Portney Lehman.
Hi, my name is Sonia Portney Lehman. I'm speaking just as myself and as, I always speak as an early childhood educator. And I just wanted to come here and be a voice that does not like facial recognition technology, thinks that we do need these and probably even stronger regulations on it due to many of the reasons that were talked about in the presentation, the existence of sort of programmed in racial bias to the technology, and just be a voice for people here in the city who see facial recognition technology as a danger to people and not as something that helps or protects people. Thank you.
Thank you for providing testimony. Marilyn Carlisle.
Good morning and thank you. I have been a citizen of Baltimore City and you can tell I'm nervous. For 43 years, never have spoken to the council. I appreciate the, the opportunity. I was raised as a person in a racist household in California. And it was only as I became a parent and became a resident of Baltimore and became, began to open my eyes that I began to learn about racial equality, racial equity, racial justice. And that is my main concern. I later met people involved with showing up for racial justice. So I am a member of that organization, SURGE. And I'm very appreciative of the intention of the bill, hope that the amendments satisfy the legal requirements and that we can get something to regulate. We need strong regulation. We need to think about storage. And as a person who was surveilled from an airplane during the protests of what happened to Freddie Gray, I realize the dangers of surveillance. And we even more so know what happens and has happened in Hong Kong, people being arrested based on recognizing their faces. So I hope that we'll have more emphasis than you offered, Councilman, on the inaccuracy, especially with people of color with their images. Thank you.
Kilian McGinnis.
Good morning. My name is Kilian McGinnis. I'm a lifelong Baltimorean and a resident of District 12. I'm also a graduate student of social work at the University of Maryland Baltimore. I'm here similarly to articulate the view that facial recognition technology will not make any of us safer in Baltimore City. There's widespread evidence, as we've seen, that FRT heightens discrimination in policing, consistently misidentifying Black and other people of color of all ages, especially Black women who are misidentified nearly 35% of the time. The research is clear. And so I'm here today to advocate, not just for these regulations, but for a total ban of FRT in Baltimore City, making permanent the previous temporary ban, which I believe was only a start to protecting our civil liberties in Baltimore City. It's my understanding that already local governments, including in large cities like Boston and San Francisco, have banned municipal use, as well as state governments in California, Oregon and New Hampshire, prohibiting or restricting law enforcement's use of FRT. And even national lawmakers recently have endorsed a proposal to halt FRT deployment. I think we need to be really clear that there is no existing FRT tech that exists that does not have significant racial bias and that regulation is not enough for these technologies and will only be used to further police and private entity agendas that are anti-Black at their core. They're also invasive and, as was previously mentioned, can be used to surveil political protests. And I think that for all these reasons, FRT will further damage community relationships with law enforcement and bolster systemic racism, which the city government is professedly seeking to remedy. I believe that a total ban on the encroachments into public life that FRT constitutes is necessary to safeguard against racism in our institutions and also to contribute to preserving our city's social fabric. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We did receive a large amount of written testimony and those will be uploaded to the record. We are going to go to our online WebEx virtual viewers. For those in attendance, please raise your hand so we can identify you to speak. Once you are identified, please state your first and your last name, as well as if you are with an organization or company. We're going to start with Barbara Zektic. Okay, and Barbara Zektic, if you are there, you should be able to speak at this time.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Wonderful. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee.
My name is Barbara Zektic. I'm here on behalf of the Security Industry Association, which is an international trade organization that represents security providers, including a substantial number of facial recognition technology developers. It's unfortunate to hear that the bill sponsor only heard about the state legislation that we have been working on for the last several years, last week. I'm not sure how I'm not sure how he didn't hear about it. However, I'm happy to talk about all of the efforts that the Security Industry Association, as well as a number of other stakeholders, including Mr. Northrup, sitting right there, have undertaken to create a compromise state package that, when passed, will serve as the most comprehensive facial recognition use on law enforcement legislation in the country. The state bill, which is Senate Bill 192, it passed both chambers last session, and it only didn't pass because it got held up for some unrelated political issues on sign e die. However, we have spoken to both bill sponsors, and we understand that it's both of their priorities to get it introduced and passed as it was passed by both chambers early in the upcoming 24th session. So, what that bill does, it addresses all of the issues that it appears the sponsor is trying to address here. And of course, it also addresses some of the issues that the council cannot legislate because of the preemption issues, which I just want to take an aside and say, a lot of those preempted things that are done in state law maybe shouldn't be viewed as barring the city from taking the opportunity, but the reality is the state does already regulate a lot of these issues very well, and I haven't heard any issues with that state regulation during this hearing so far. So, Senate Bill 192, so what it does, it generally makes facial recognitions result inadmissible in court. Facial recognition technology searches cannot be used as the sole basis to establish probable cause. It restricts, it very strongly restricts the list of crimes.
Ms. Zektic, we truly appreciate your testimony. If you would be able to present your closing at this time, thank you.
Thanks. Sorry. I'll follow up in writing with everything that the state bill does. However, we do feel that it addresses all these issues, and we respectfully request that those interested in this policy issue support that legislation at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jake Parker, and for our virtual attendees, you have two minutes. If you have anything additional that may exceed the two minutes, you can feel free to submit additional testimony, additional written testimony. Thank you. Jake Parker, you are able to speak at this time.
Hi, Jake Parker with the Security Industry Association. Just wanted to add there, the regarding the licensure requirement, I think we definitely need to ask whether this is a good idea to have private businesses request licensure from the city to select what might be the most appropriate security system for their premises to protect their employees, patrons, and property. I think that's something that needs to be worked out further. Also, it doesn't seem that the, some uses of this technology by businesses are contemplated where it might be remote or used for payments or for identity confirmation for payments. It was also mentioned by Mr. Conroy earlier about driver verification. Those are all things that I'm not sure how this works, you know, with those type of applications, and so that's definitely something we would need some answers on. And then, you know, just the presentation earlier, just wanted to comment regarding the law enforcement aspects of the technology. The fact that humans are, you know, not so good at identifying faces really shows the need for this technology, which can act as a check on human bias. In fact, there's U.S. government research under NIST that shows that trained individuals plus the technology actually are the most accurate at identifying unknown individuals. And so, also along those lines, important to consider among some of the issues that are identified, some of the really significant success stories that are from our state, more than a dozen of them that we document on our website, as far as how this technology's being used for public safety and criminal investigations, finding suspects in very serious crimes, also exonerating people that are innocent and helping people that are that have mental health needs that can't be identified readily. And so, there are many successes as well that should be considered in all this. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. If you could just state your first and your last name, and if you are with any type of organization, thank you.
Great, thank you, yes. My name is Kristin Carbone. I am a resident of Baltimore in the 12th District. I'm not representing any organization. Speaking today because I want to advocate for a total ban on facial recognition technology, and I also want to note my opposition to the city of Baltimore's relationship with the Israeli Defense Force and defense contractors. First, public safety needs to be rooted in public trust, but the use of facial recognition technology takes the city in a dangerous direction of total surveillance, and I think will just violate the trust of its residents. Baltimore residents should not be subject to such biased and privacy violating technology. Furthermore, facial recognition technology is some of the same technology that Israel uses to surveil Palestinians and maintain its apartheid state. I think that's a dangerous precedent to follow. Taxpayers should not in any form be contributing to the Israeli Defense Force or weapons and surveillance contractors. I'm aware that Baltimore City has a partnership with Israel and uses city funds to train both BPD and to purchase weapons and technology, and as such, I want to advocate that no city funds be used for business with Israel. I think we're all aware of Israel's gross violations of human rights, of their war crimes.
Ma'am, I appreciate your, truly appreciate your testimony. Could we stick to this particular, specifically to this particular bill in facial recognition technology?
Yeah, of course, I'm just finishing up.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to advocate for two things, that no city funds be used for business with Israel to buy such technology, and to advocate for a total ban on facial recognition technology. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are going to, if we have any additional virtual attendees who would like to testify specifically regarding this bill, it looks like we do have an additional hand, Juan Londo.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect, thank you. My name is Juan Londo, and I'm here to represent me and my colleague, Ashley Johnson. We represent the Information Technology Innovation Foundation. Our nonprofit, nonpartisan intent is mission to formulate and promote public policies to better technological innovation and productivity. In my testimony today, I would like to discuss the benefits and applications of FRT and the importance of maximizing these benefits while minimizing any potential risk. Above all, I commend the city of Baltimore for stepping back from rules that would severely restrict or ban FRT. Policymakers should recognize that creating a patchwork of laws creates barriers to innovation for both businesses and consumers, and therefore avoid enacted regulations for technology at the local level that create conflict or duplicative roles with state and federal policies. There's much more appropriate for policymakers to focus on regulating the use of FRT by senior agencies as the amendment bill proposes. FRT compares images of faces in one or two different ways. The first type of comparison is one-to-many identification search, in which the technology searches database of faces to find potential matches of a particular face. Second type of comparison is known as a one-to-one identification search, in which the technology compares two faces to determine similarity in them. Facial recognition technology has rapidly improved in recent years and provides numerous benefits to society. It has increased public safety. It has been helping, for example, using locating missing persons, fraudulent activity, solving cold cases, or identifying witnesses, suspects, and other persons of interest, which will do so in a fraction of the time it would take humans, saving time and taxpayer dollars. It has really increased convenience for consumers, especially streamlining security check-in processes or places like airports, especially in Baltimore, Washington, International Airport, which has gained service potential on location technology, streamlining airport security. It also has increased security for businesses. They can verify online purchases with their credit card companies by taking selfies, banks, and verify consumers' identities online. And organizations of all kinds can use facial recognition technology to ensure authorized individuals access to secret areas. These are just a handful of examples of how facial recognition technology can benefit societies. Yet, a lot of the conversations surrounding these technologies inevitably focuses on the potential risks and downplays or dismisses the potential benefits.
Mr. Londo, we are grateful for your testimony. If you could close out with your last, your last sentence, please. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to close, I just want to emphasize that it is job for policymakers to consider the overall impact of new technologies, both positive and negative. In the case of facial recognition technology, there are many clearly beneficial government and commercial uses that should not be overlooked. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you to all of our online folks who signed up to testify. We did have one additional person within the chambers that we want to allow an option to testify, and that is Martez Gaines.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for your recognition. My name is Martez Gaines. I'm a resident of the 8th District and a senior organizer with Organizing Black. Today, I'm standing as a representative for the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs. A few weeks ago, we held a screening and a discussion around the film Coded Bias. This was an effort to deepen our community's understanding of the pervasive bias that exists even in technology and including facial recognition technology. FRT really has no place in Baltimore. We know that Black people in Baltimore face overwhelming disparities at really every single stage of the criminal punishment system, from street-level surveillance and profiling all the way through to sentencing and conditions of confinement. FRT does not make us safer. It leads to an oppressive state. Facial recognition and other surveillance technologies, as been said before, will heighten discrimination in policing, especially as law enforcement agencies continue to make misinformed decisions around arrests and detainment that disproportionately impact marginalized communities. We need to ensure our privacy and personal data is protected. Thus, we need to ensure that our city has strong regulations on the use of all of our data, including data collected through facial recognition technology. Again, FRT really has no place in Baltimore. We know that every dollar spent on high-tech surveillance is a dollar not spent on community improvements that do much more to increase community safety, belonging, and the lives of its residents. We've heard this list ad nauseam. Our communities need better schools, more grocery stores, consistent trash and recycling pickup, better streets, and more accessible sidewalks, more things to do for our youth, more things to do for our elders. We should invest in the cutting-edge technology that seeks to address those social determinants of health, like employment, education, and socioeconomic status, access to health care, our physical environment, and social support networks. We know that healthy people make healthy communities, which make a healthy city, and that is not what FRT does. It is, sorry, this is not what FRT does, and thus, it and other, excuse me, invasive surveillance technology really have no place in Baltimore. We won't ignore that these technologies are already here, so we, as a coalition, will support these bills offered by Councilman Burnett to establish stronger guardrails around FRT as an important step for Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who has testified today. We are going to continue this discussion with future hearings, and at this time, we are in recess. Thank you.